First time.
That's again.
The Muscatine City Council will come to order. Fran, would you do a roll call, please?
Yep.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Shahadi, Bynum, Phillips, Fred.
Present.
Four present and one absent here. I'm sorry, three absent, your honor.
Three absent. Very good, very good. Okay, folks, we have some items here. Item number two, which is a request to approve professional services agreement for the Community Development Block grant downtown revitalization project. So, the question is, is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Is that Phil?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Second. Scott, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries four to zero. Item number three on tonight's agenda is the Blue Zones update. Jody Hanson, you are on.
Thank you so much. Good evening, my name is Jody Hanson. To those of you that do not know me, I am the Blue Zones Project Muscatine, uh, Blue Zones Project Muscatine Community Lead. Tonight, I would like to just share a couple of updates on where we are now and just talk about some future events as well. To date, we have 4,439 people who have signed the Blue Zones pledge, so that means that they've pledged a healthy action, and we'd like to increase that as well. So every year, we see an increase in our engagement, so we'd like to continue that. We have twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty-two work sites that are designated and working on two additional work sites. We have ten designated restaurants. We have three schools and we're, and we are working with two additional schools right now. We have had really great success, obviously, with the community policies that you guys have really helped facilitate. Cedar Street project, as well as the Colorado Street project. It's truly amazing to see people using that trail and the path and walking, running, pushing their kids in strollers, riding their bikes. We're just so pleased to see that. The roundabout has also been a great addition as far as traffic getting, getting through, and we've heard really good feedback from that. We'd also like to thank the council on your recent approval of the Bike Pedestrian Master Plan. We appreciate your continued support of well-being aimed to help Muscatine live longer, better. Muscatine Community Gardens also continue to have support. Muscatine Community Gardens has formed a community garden association, so we meet monthly, and we grew the community gardens from six to now nine, and we're hoping to do even more in the future. And that really gives folks like a great opportunity to socialize and to grow their own produce if they don't have yard space to do so, so we're really thrilled with that. And to celebrate that community gardens, we had a community garden party. I think some of you may have attended. It was a great time, we had it one of the community gardens, just to show like what this is all about, and here's some great stories from the gardeners that go out there. And we, it was just a real nice time that we hope to replicate next year. Blue Zones Project was heavily involved in the Healthy Living Festival this past weekend, and as a committee member, I would like to thank Greg Monziger, Mayor Hopkins, Andrew Fangman, and Rich Climes and the Parks and Rec staff for all of their hard work for that festival. I know that was a great turnout, and there were so many things going on in Muscatine that day, but we really appreciate people investing and finding out like what Muscatine has to offer as far as trails and how to improve healthy living in your own backyard is the mantra, and we'd really like, really thank you for, for your commitment to that. Upcoming activities, we are set to launch three walking school buses at the end of October. So, we've met with Superintendent Rebe and the three school principals, and we're just really excited to see those going. A study has shown recently that there's very few students that actually walk to school compared to like the nineteen seventies, for instance. And re-engineering steps back into their day and just getting them ready for school, you know, walking, getting their blood flowing, we'd really like to see that help attendance in schools as well, so really excited to get those going. One walking school bus in particular is over on Colorado Street, which, the sidewalk that was recently put in, that will really help those kids walk to school, and then the sidewalk in Weed Park that was recently put in will also help the kids in the Weed Park area, so really thrilled about that. And the other things that we have going on is we continue to have our plant-based cooking classes, we have those once a month out at Hy-Vee. Hy-Vee's been a great partner, and we continue to see great attendance at these classes. And it's just really teaching people like, you know, you don't have to eat, you know, fruits and vegetables, you know, only, but just adding those into your diet and showing people how, how to cook with these in a fun, unique way, and it's also a great time for people to get together socially. We are set to have a walking MOI launch on October twenty-eighth, and this is also to commemorate the, the new sidewalk in Weed Park. We're actually gonna do a ribbon cutting on that sidewalk, and folks from Wellmark that helped facilitate the, or gave us the grant to do these sidewalks, we're gonna celebrate with them and then do a after, after the, we're gonna do after-walk celebration at Yakichak. And then, we would just like to thank the Blue Zones people that have been involved, the, the city staff, the school district. We'd like to thank all the residents that have really helped with the Blue Zones Project, because this is a community-wide initiative that without their help, without your help, we wouldn't be where we are, so we really continue your ongoing commitment. And some other things kind of coming up are, in the preliminary stages, we're looking at doing a work site summit, and this will be a place where all of the work sites that are designated could come together and share best practices, because what we find in the Blue Zones Project is, there's all these great stories to tell, there's all these great successes, and having a platform to share those, we, we feel will really just help everyone collaborate. So again, I'd really like to thank you, again, the city and council for your ongoing support, and I'm open to any questions if anyone has any.
Only thing I can think of is, have any sense for how we stack up with some of the other communities?
How many, you know, I can give you a statistic. So, Muscatine has seen some progress in their well-being. We're measured by the Gallup Healthways Wellbeing Index, and we, our report is that we are at eighty percent of those surveyed, as far as people aware of the Blue Zones Project, so we're second to Mason City. We have also, we've raised six percentage points in people that exercise regularly, and we've also raised seven percentage points to people eating healthy. So, and those statistics are great. Muscatine, and Greg could address this as well, but Muscatine is looked at often as being a poster child for the Blue Zones Project. And I really attribute that to the city's collabor, the collaboration with the city and the, the things that we're able to make happen, to make this place a better place to live, and to increase walkability and livability. I mean, Mississippi Drive corridor project is a great example of that, that we really look forward to future collaboration, and just making the city a place where people want to be and people are able to just, you know, enjoy their life. But, Muscatine is definitely looked at as one of those places, so we're really proud of that.
I have a question, Jody, well, it's not really, yeah, it is a question. Back up a little bit, you, you mentioned briefly the roundabout. What would you say, there's an element of folks in Muscatine that are not in favor of that roundabout and talk negatively about it, what would you say to those people?
Well, I would talk about the facts, so the facts are that it has, I mean, it's statistically roundabouts. If there is an accident that occurs, it would be less severe. Traffic, my own personal experience is that when I'm on Cedar Street, traffic is constantly flowing, and so you don't have that backup. There's so many kids that live in that area that, the YMCA and, and the apartments and people that live on Cedar Street, and just having that area wider and people able to walk and having traffic flow like slower, it slows stuff down and also keeps it going. So, that's just my personal opinion, I mean, we are, you know, really happy with the results for the roundabout, and I know Greg and I communicate often just to keep up on, you know, how's it going, have there been any accidents, and a lot of times, we'll be asked if, how those things are going by Healthways. Right now, they're looking at doing a case study on Muscatine to see all the things we've implemented and how that's changing our lives here in Muscatine, so. I've, I've heard positive things, but again, I mean, I don't know, that's...
Would you personally encourage the construction of more?
I don't know, I would have to look at where, where those are gonna be and hear, hear why. I mean, I, I can't imagine that would be something that would be negative, but again, you know, I would like to know all the facts and why someone has chosen to put it there and what the, what the anticipated outcome would be.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, council?
You may wish to, may be interested in knowing that there are thousands all over Europe, tens of thousands. First one was put in in England in nineteen oh nine.
Oh, wow.
It worked pretty well.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, it, it's, it's something new, and I understand, it, it takes...
Nineteen oh nine.
Right, that, but I mean, here in Muscatine, you know, it's, it's things people need to get used to or have gotten used to, and I know that I would like to see more projects that increase safety, for sure, especially kids walking to school. I know that's something that we're definitely trying to figure out is how to get kids to walk to school safely, and just looking at Cedar Street right now, like I said, I mean, I'm sure all of you have seen it, I mean, it's awesome, so.
It is.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Jody. Appreciate how it works.
Okay, item number four on tonight's agenda, Strong Communities Presentation. Adam, is that you?
I don't know, actually, it's not working.
Dave, it's Dave. Hello, Dave. Hello, Adam.
This is a twofer tonight. Thank you very much for your report, Jody, and, but as you all know, change is a word that some people take differently than others. We are here to present to you, because it was asked of the council to, to come before and give you kind of a progress report on a couple of business programs that we have been, we put together and launched in December last year. We worked with the banks, the three banks, three local banks, and pooled a million dollars, which you'll see in the report, and then we're gonna give you some of the results and some of the success stories from that. The second program we'll be talking about tonight is the Small Business Forgivable Loan Program, and it's, it's a mouthful, but the point is that it's also had a tremendous amount of success and leverage in the marketplace, and we, we're looking forward to doing more, and I'm gonna let Adam present this. He, he does most of the administrative aspects of this broad program, so, are these two programs, so I'll step aside and be here for, for questions.
Obviously, I need to change up PowerPoints. Nancy likes to be well-prepared, but I am not giving budget financial statements. Let me get this changed up here.
You both look very nice tonight, by the way.
Thank you. Mayor, council, thank you for letting Dave and I present on what we're calling a Small Business Creation Project. And let us start off by thanking our partners in this project, CBI Bank and Trust, and I'll apologize right now if I happen to call them Central State Bank in the future, I'm still working through that transition, as well as Community Bank and Trust and First National Bank, and obviously, City Council, the city of Muscatine is, is very much a strong partner in this project and these program going forward. So the goals of Small Business Creation in Muscatine, obviously, we want to support local small businesses, and, and I really want to connect this back to the tagline that we used as a part of the, the award application that we wrote and kind of the tagline of the Small Business Creation Project, and that is to support and grow the foundation of a thriving community. And much of me and Dave's travels talking to entrepreneurial programs across the state, they, they, there's a shift between trying to attract businesses from outside, more towards trying to grow with, from within, and obviously, here in Muscatine, we've been quite successful with that, with a number of local businesses that started out as small businesses and grow into national and international companies, so it's really kind of getting back to what the foundation of Muscatine is. Also to encourage local entrepreneurs, there's, there's a, a culture being developed in Muscatine to support and encourage entrepreneurs here locally, really looking at trying to drive that more, as well as to drive infill development in targeted areas around the city, to really reinvigorate and rejuvenate those areas in the downtown and, and key districts. I think it works, might be easier. So, the first program that we're gonna talk about is a Small Business Forgivable Loan Program. This was a program that started back in December, I think we awarded our first loan in January. Small Business Forgivable Loan gives new businesses the opportunity to receive a loan up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Fifteen thousand dollars for startup costs. These are costs incurred in startup that we're calling that are more permanent, so remodeling or anything along those lines that are critical to the business that are more permanent, so, you know, if they're buying a couch, that's not really what that's intended for. We want the improvements to stay with the location. And then ten thousand dollars for code-related expenses, so this can be anything from handicap access to sprinkler systems, any health requirements that they, they have to meet as per, per local ordinance or law, state or federal regulations. City council, you guys have put forth hundred thousand dollars per fiscal year to be lent out as a part of this project. We have three targeted districts that the business have to be located in, one being the downtown, Park Avenue, and then the Grandview is the other, other district as well, so the, the location has to be, the property has to be within one of those three districts. And really looking for businesses that are either new businesses or currently operating businesses that are expanding into a new product line or a new service, so really the key is, you know, there has to be something new with what the business is getting into. And, and to fill vacant business locations with strong viable businesses, you know, that along Grandview, the downtown, Park Avenue, there's a number of, of business locations that, that are great spots for, for a new startup, and really trying to drive that forward and, and fill those vacant businesses. So, to date, we have lent seven Small Business Forgivable Loan. I guess that's probably something I should have had back on the other side, but the, the term of these loans are five years, with twenty percent of the loan being forgiven annually at the origination date of the loan, given that they've completed the required annual reporting for, for the project, and currently, I mean, we're only ten months into these, this project, so none of the current businesses have completed their, their annual report yet. So the seven businesses that we have lent to is Big River Guns, Home Run Hitters, Well-Fit Nutrition Bar, Playmore Fun Center, also Rose Bowl, Hannah's Awesome Treats, Sign Pro 3D Printing, and Salvatally's Italian Restaurant. And the following slides are just a, a little bit more detail on, on each one of those businesses. I'm not gonna go into the detail right now, but if you have any questions about them, feel free to contact myself, Dave, Greg, ask questions at the end of the presentation well, as well if you'd like, but we're gonna skip ahead here a little bit. All right, the, the other program that Dave mentioned is the Building Improvements Loan Program, and this one, we, we really could not do without our partners, without CBI, Community Bank and Trust, and First National Bank, you know, they're, they're the ones that are, you know, really responsible for this program. Yes, the city, you know, administers in, helps, you know, helps with administration of it, but it wouldn't be possible without them. The three local banks have committed to one million dollars in building improvement loans. The little carrot that goes along with it is acceptable projects receive a one percent below prime interest rate. So it's not, not free money, but it's a little incentive to help encourage business owners and property owners to, to fix up their buildings. The funding goes towards infrastructure, more critical infrastructure, so the types of funding that we've done currently is roof, sewer lines, facades, had a number that are interested in doing sprinkler systems with them, they haven't moved forward with that yet, but that's another option that we have with this, as well as remodeling for, for the business operations. We did start with this program being used in a very small district in the downtown. With the bank support, we have expanded that to the three districts that we use for the Small Business Forgivable Loan as well, so it's used in the downtown, the Grandview Ave District, as well as the Park Ave District. Process starts out by the, the city staff, myself, Dave, receiving an application from the, from the project, is reviewed by myself, by our building inspector, and then if there's some things that need to be changed, we communicate with the property owner and make sure that it's a quality project, and then if it passes our review, then we write a letter of support for the project and forward it on to the financial institution that they're working with, and then the, the bank is responsible for taking it from there, so making sure that the, the business or the individual meets the financial lending requirements and, and takes everything down, down that route. Currently with this program, we have lent, or the banks have lent, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars through this program, so it's, it's been, it's been used with large projects, which, which is great. Additionally, so, the other piece that we have along with this is, is additional bank financing from CBI Bank and Trust, Community Bank and Trust, and First National Bank, and these are the funds in addition to, to make these projects, projects successful. It's used, complements the Small Business Forgivable Loan Program, and it's also used in conjunction with other incentive programs, you know, such as the Building Improvements Loan Program. A new business may use that for the Building Improvements Loan Program for some improvements to their building, and then they also need to purchase infrastructure or some sort of capital equipment for their business operations, and, and the three local banks have been, been great in providing additional funding for small businesses here in Muscatine. So, let's look at the numbers a little bit. This is the leverage piece of what the Small Business Creation Project has done here in Muscatine. Through the Small Business Forgivable Loan, we have lent a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the seven local small businesses, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars through the Building Improvements Loan Program to, and that's been to three projects with those funds, and then, so private financing to support business development, this can either be financing from the banks or personal financing for these projects, is a hundred, or sorry, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So in total, we have over a million dollars invested in small business creation over the last ten months into these ten projects here in Muscatine. Additionally, so that's, you know, jobs are also important with small business as well. Through this program, we have created seven full-time positions, eighteen part-time positions, and a number of construction jobs as well. And the, with, with small new businesses, jobs start off very small in the beginning. A lot of these businesses are one, two-person operations, you know, multiple part-time. As those businesses grow, expand, start receiving more customers, we look to them adding more jobs, more positions in the future, so that's, you know, one of the goals of this, as well as as those grow, creates more jobs here locally. So let's talk about some, some recognition that we're looking at receiving for, for this project. We've been nominated by Community Bank and Trust to receive a Strong Communities Award. This Strong Communities Award is presented from, by the Federal Home Loan Bank, the Des Moines Member Region. It is, it's, it's an award given to, to strong communities that do a project in their community that represents what a, a strong community is, what a strong community is about. First place receives fifteen thousand dollars, second place receives three thousand dollars, and if successful with this award and this, this grant, we'll take those funds and, and put it back into a small business effort. I don't think we've worked out the details of what necessarily will be, but it will work to, to help support and grow small business in Muscatine. Additionally, you know, we were nominated by Community Bank and Trust, but it's also supported by CBI Bank and Trust and First National Bank of Muscatine. All three local financial institutions are FHLB Des Moines members, so, which is unique for this. Past, past award winners have been one, one-member bank, so this really goes towards what I think the Strong Communities about, we think the Strong Communities Awards about, is community coming together to, to better, better, better. So, we need everyone's help in getting us to, to this award, just like I think you guys saw a lot last week on our drinking fountains, there is a voting process for that. There's a voting opportunity for this project as well. You can vote once every twenty-four hours on any device that you may have, so cellphone, computer, work computer, home computer, kids' computer, grandparents' computer, kids', I can keep going on, but any device that you can find. The website to vote is FHLBForCommunity.com/voting. You can also get to vote through the city of Muscatine website, so MuscatineIowa.gov, and if you just scroll down on the homepage in the spotlight section, there's an area that you can click there to vote as well. It's not one hundred percent determined by votes, but votes is another criteria that they use in determining who they, who they award or the projects to. With this award, we're one of four finalists in the rural category, so, you know, really looking for the community to support and supporting this award nomination. And again, you know, this would not be possible without, without our partners, without City Council in this project, so a big thanks goes out to you guys, CBI Bank and Trust, So, a big thanks goes out to you guys, CBI Bank and Trust, Community Bank and Trust, and First National Bank. So, with that, that concludes my presentation. Greg and Dave, if you have anything to add?
Did a great job.
Counsel, any questions?
Happy to answer questions.
Just a comment, if, if I go back a couple of years, there were some small business owners in town that, that made it, brought it to my attention that, you know, that they, they think something needed to be done. They weren't sure what or how the city might even help, but it's clear that we're, we're doing something.
This, this is definitely a great start. You know, I, I know at least internally, there are some other things that we're looking at doing to keep the support of Small Business Creation in Muscatine going. So, it's, it's something that is, is always on our mind and how we can better help local businesses here in Muscatine.
If the, if the businesses have, downtown businesses have rental space above, can they apply for the forgivable loan and/or this home or building improvement loan to, with the rental spaces, if they want to do some work on those, are they qualified also?
Yes, yep, it qualifies as well.
I mean, it's all business.
If it's for, if it's business-related, if it's not, not, not living space.
If it's not living, their living space.
Right, living space, no, not for rental, rental space, upper story housing, this is not for that. This is, this is for commercial and retail, small business development.
Okay.
Right. Dave's, Dave's working on part two on, on the upper story redevelopment program, and we'll be back to talk more about that certainly as well.
Does include the, the grant for the, the backside, for the alley and the backside of the, that's in addition to.
That's in addition, and that's a five hundred thousand dollar grant for the rehab and the backsides of the, between Iowa and City.
So, that's even an addition.
That's an addition to this, and that's certainly supporting those local downtown property as well.
And those property owners are able to take advantage of the Building Improvements Loan Program as well. We have at least one property owner that's looking at going above and beyond the work as a part of the CDBG project and capitalizing on the Building Improvements Loan Program to improve his building even more.
Anyone else, counsel? Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Folks, item number five on tonight's agenda of the year-end budget basis financial statement presentation, that would be Nancy.
Tonight, we're going to review the budget basis financial statements for the city for the year end in June thirtieth, twenty fifteen. The actual audit report, the onsite audit work is completed. The actual audit report will be released probably the first part of December, but the onsite work is completed for that. This kind of wraps up last fiscal year and gets us ready for going into the budget for the next fiscal year, sixteen, seventeen. What the city spends a lot of time on during budget is the general fund, and that's what the emphasis will be on our presentation tonight, but we'll also do an over, overlook of the other funds as well. First slide is general fund fund statement. That shows the major revenue categories in the general fund. The general fund funds the basic city services, police, fire, public works, library, art center, parks and recreation, and general city administration. The major funding source for that is property taxes, and last year there was about seven million, one hundred and thirty thousand in property taxes. There was also utility taxes, hotel motel taxes of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, cable franchise, cable, utility franchise, about three hundred and fifty thousand in licenses and permits, fines and forfeitures, just over a million dollars in fines last year. Intergovernmental revenue, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, and that's revenue from other governments, federal government, state government, other local governments. Charges for services, five hundred and sixty thousand, use of money and property, that's rents, interest, leases, that type of thing, a hundred and eight thousand, and then the various other miscellaneous revenues that totaled six hundred and seventy-one thousand. So, there's about eleven point two three three million of general fund revenues last year. Expenditures on the next page, this is broken out by the function of the general fund expenditure, and then it's further broken out into whether it's current operating or capital outlay. Again, as in every year, public safety is the significant majority of the general fund's costs. Public safety, about eight point two million in operating expenditures, and additional ninety-four thousand below in capital outlay. Public works, two million, one hundred and forty-six thousand in operating, and additional, an additional one hundred and seventy-nine thousand in capital. Health and social services, twenty thousand, that's a subsidy to senior resources. Culture and recreation, and that area includes all the park and recreation activities, as well as the library and art center. That was two million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand in operating, and an additional about two, two-twenty in capital. Community and economic development, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand operating, and a small amount, twenty-two hundred in capital. And then general government, two point one million in operating, and additional thirty-two thousand in capital. General government includes the mayor and council budget, city administrator, HR, finance, general city building grounds, risk management, IT, and that also includes the city's insurance costs. So, the total expenditures was about sixteen point six million. And before we take into consideration trans, funding transfers in, our revenues are actually less than expenditures by five point three five five million. The next page, that shows our funding transfers in. That includes road use taxes, employee benefits tax levy, transfer from ambulance for a portion of the fire department costs, perpetual care interest, and TIF funds. So, those totaled about six point six million. By state law, some of those areas have to be accounted for as a special revenue fund, and then with the money transferred to the general fund. Transfers out, and these are kind of the opposite of that, some tax levies have to be received in the general fund, and then we can transfer them out. That includes the transit tax levy and the mad, and the levy tax levy, which we transfer to the transit enterprise fund, and the Mad Creek Levy Capital Project Fund. So, the total other financing sources and uses, five point nine million. The next area is pretty significant. This is where we take revenues and other sources and compare it to expenditures and other uses. And revenues and other sources did exceed expenditures by five hundred and thirty-eight thousand during the past year, and that results in an increase in the general fund balance. We had estimated three million, four hundred and seventy-two thousand, that was our actually be, actual beginning balance, and our ending balance is about just slightly over four million. We did have outstanding purchase orders at the end of the year of a hundred and four thousand to come down to an unreserved ending balance of three point nine million, which is a very strong fiscal year general fund ending balance. The next slide is kind of an analysis on how we get to that, where we are in the general fund, and why we ended the year the way we did. When we did the original budget, and this is, I can't see across the room, we thought the ending balance would be, be close to three million. When we did the revised estimate last year, when we did the fifteen, sixteen budget, we amended that up to about three point five million, and then we compare that to the actual of three point nine million. So, we're actually over the revised estimate estimate by three hundred and eighty thousand, which is very good. And then we also look at the percent the ending fund balance is of the general fund expenditures. And this is the measure, we had amended our financial policies, our general fund financial policy to in November of twenty thirteen. Prior to that, it was officially a minimum of ten percent of general fund balance. We revised it, so it was a minimum of sixteen point seven percent. And so, our actual ending balance came out at twenty-two point six percent, which is higher than estimated. I do a few other calculations down there. Some of the encumbrances will actually be funded for road use tax, so it, it actually is a little higher than what we're seeing, based on the bottom of the slide, twenty-two point eight percent. The next slide, we did have one item that was budgeted that was not completed, and that was painting of the soccer complex roofs, that twenty-four thousand has been carried forward. So, that would in effect reduce that percentage down to, a little bit, to about twenty-two point five percent, but still well over our estimate. The next part of this slide, go through the general categories of revenues and compare it to the, to the revised estimate, and then we also do the same for expenditures. And I'll just kind of skip through this. The revenues and other, and transfers in were actually under our estimate by a hundred and thirty-three thousand, but the transfers in were under, so without those being, and the transfers in were under because expenditures were under. So, without those, we would have, we would have reached all our revenue estimates. Kind of just skip down through there, tax collections, a little over our estimate, eighty-two hundred. Some of the other utility taxes, utility franchise, and the state commercial and industrial, some of those were under. The state reimbursement was slightly over by thirteen, seven. Cable franchise fees was under, and this is where we're getting into the road use tax transfer in, it's under the revised estimate, what, by one hundred and seventy-one thousand because the corresponding expenditures were under. Similar with the employee benefits, the actual costs were less than estimated by, by seventy-two hundred, so that's also a, a good thing that that's under budget. Then health insurance, transfer hotel motel tax this year. A year ago, hotel motel taxes were significantly, significantly higher than what we had estimated. This year, it's gone down pretty close to previous levels, but we did increase our estimate based on a year ago's higher amount, but it is under by sixty-one thousand. And then the rest of the revenue areas kind of by department, and so I'll skip through those. Building department revenues slightly under by seventy-one hundred. The next slide has library revenues were over, art center revenues were over, parks and rec was slightly under, mainly aquatic center revenues, which is a lot weather-driven. Cemetery revenues were under, this is sales of grave spaces and burial fees. Public works revenues was under, police grants were slightly over. The court fines actually came in under our estimate by twenty-seven thousand. We have projected these to increase with our change from the separate city prosecutor to the use of the county attorney, and we haven't realized the full amount of the impact from that at this point, so it was, that did come in under. The next area was very strong, though, and this is our, the collections from the automatic traffic enforcement fines. That was over our estimate by slightly over two hundred thousand. That's mostly due to use of the state's income offset program to collect prior year, prior year and current year unpaid fines. And this was the first year that we, that we did that, and it was, it was very successful in, in making those collections. And that is handled by Municipal Collections of America, our collection agent for that. So, a lot of the paperwork involved in that, he handles for the city. Other police revenues over by twelve thousand, and then licenses and permits, fire and various other revenues were slightly over, over our estimate. So, even though the bottom line says we're under by a hundred and thirty-three thousand, it's only because the funding transfers in were under. The next page goes through the expenditures by function of the city, and all of the departments operated within their, their budgets. In total, expenditures were under by five hundred and thirteen thousand. Of that, twenty-four thousand was the carry forward for the soccer complex roof painting, and the general government activities, all the administrative activities, activities of the city was under by eighty-one thousand. Public safety actually came in under by two hundred and twelve thousand. Some of that is vacancies that occurred during the year, fuel costs were lower than we had estimated, and maintenance costs. Library, art center, and parks was under by eighty thousand. Community and economic development was under by ninety-five hundred. Public works was under by one hundred and one thousand. Airport subsidy was under by sixty-three hundred, and the only area that was over was the transfers out, and that was because the tax levies came in higher than what we'd estimated. So, that's directly related to increased revenue. So, overall, departments did a good job of staying within their, their budget last fiscal year. The next slide, we've got a graphical representation of the last ten years of general fund balance. Our low year was in FY two thousand eight, two thousand nine, which was a memorable budget year. And since that time, we've increased, some of the decreases during this time period were budgeted decreases. So, even though we're showing it decreasing in FY twelve, thirteen, that was the year we funded, I think, the Fire, Fire Engines, financial software, and we were able to do that without borrowing money. We were able to take it from the fund balance above the minimum fund balance level. And then our three point nine million is our, our record high at this point. The next slide shows those same ten years, and this shows the percent of the general fund ending balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures. So, again, that two thousand eight, two thousand nine year was our, our most challenging year. That was down to ten point eight percent, and since that time, we've, we've been increasing it and well above even our newly set minimum fund balance level in the, in the financial policies. The next slide, and I'm going to pick and choose which things to, to highlight, but everything that has a footnote number, there's an explanation for the difference on future pages. This shows all the funds, operating funds down the left-hand side. It shows what the original budgeted ending balance was projected to be, and that was set in March of two thousand fourteen. The revised estimate fund balance, which was set in March of fifteen, and that's what we've been using for the comparison. And then we're showing the actual ending fund balance, and whether, then that difference is the far right column, and whether it's favorable or unfavorable. The first line item is general fund, which we've just reviewed, that's over our estimate by about three hundred and eighty thousand. Some of the smaller ones, I'm going to skip. Water pollution control, that is, our revenues were slightly under budget by thirty-seven thousand, and that was primarily in the industrial area, but expenditures were under by a hundred and twenty-four thousand. There is a carry forward, though, in that fund of ninety-one thousand for the dredge line extension progress, project. So, when you take that into consideration, their ending balance is very close to what we projected it to be. Collection and drainage, that is eighty-one thousand higher. Most of that is because expenditures were under by about seventy-nine thousand, and revenues were slightly over by three thousand. Refuse collection, it shows that we're under our original revised estimate by about thirty thousand. We did amend their budget in May for some things that had come up since we had done the budget. One of the things- One of the things was that we, before that, we had a firm that was doing the compost site chipping for, for no fee, and they were just doing it so they could have the mulch. That firm went out of business, and we can't locate anybody else who would do it under that arrangement. So we had 12,000 to chip brush in the compost site, and there was also 20,000 for increased vehicle maintenance costs.
I'm sorry, 20,000 for?
Increased vehicle maintenance costs. That deficit fund balance and refuse collection of 28,000, we knew the, but the fund balance was going to be close, because we had estimated it to be $637, which is very minimal. That does take into account, though, the encumbrance for the automated refuse collection vehicle. So that's already deducted from the fund balance, and we haven't bought it yet, we haven't paid for it. But we include outstanding purchase orders when we do the analysis.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure I heard all that, but we're about $65,000 delta in refuse collection, is that right?
We're under where we, we thought we'd have a minimal ending balance of $637. We actually have a deficit of 28,400, which is a difference of about 29,000.
Yeah, I was looking at the original budget.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then we'll switch to a very positive fund, the landfill fund. And we had thought we'd still have a deficit at June 30th of 183,000. It's actually a positive balance for the first time in a very long time of 100,000. We had thought we, the deficit would be eliminated next fiscal year, but we had allowed for funds for the groundwater remediation work, and that had not all been done by June 30th. So if we had done that, we would still have a small deficit, but we, we have officially eliminated the deficit in the landfill fund as of fiscal year 1415. Landfill revenues actually were over 130, about 139,000, because of increased usage. Expenditures were under by 145,000, which includes that groundwater remediation work. So we do have a strong waste volume. It was close to 39,000 tons when we were budgeting based on 35,000, which has been right about where it's been the last several years. Transfer station is another fund with a deficit of 21,000. This was budgeted, we knew it was a close budget. We had budgeted for it to be 24,000 deficit, and it's actually a little less of a deficit. Some of the reason for the deficit, their revenues were higher by 219,000, and expenditures were over the original revised estimate by 216,000. A lot of the transfer station budget is driven by the waste volume going through it. So when waste volume is up, expenditures are also up. But the ending balance was close to where we thought it would be. Some of the reason the, that that fund is tight is that the revenue from the negotiated contracts for the landfill, all that's been directed to the landfill fund. So in the past, we had positive balances in refuse and transfer station, and negatives in landfill, and it's kind of swapped out this year. That will be considered as part of next year's budget. Some of these others, parking came out.
I'm sorry, Nancy, can I back you up?
Sure.
What is the transfer station closure reserve?
The state requires, both for the landfill and the transfer station.
I understand the landfill, but?
They require it for the transfer station, too. So if, if it was closed for some reason.
We'd have to bury it?
We would have to. It's only $39,000, but we're required to set that money aside. It's probably not intended for transfer stations like ours. It's probably intended for smaller operations around the state.
Thank you.
Parking, revenues were over by about 11,000, expenditures were under by 7100. Golf course, relatively small ending balance, but it's about 30,000 higher than where we thought it would be. Boat harbor is less by 4,700. Ambulance had a very strong year. It's over the estimate by 84,000, and that is mainly revenues. Revenues came in over our estimate by 57,000, and expenditures were under the estimate by 27,000, so a very good year for the ambulance fund. Some of the internal service funds, the health insurance fund is 25,000 less than what we thought it would be, but it still has 1,445,000 in there. The next page, these are special revenue funds. The employee benefits fund is higher by 90,000 than what we thought it would be. Some of that is, we allowed for, the city's required to fund medical expenses for employees that retire due to non-automated injury. We had allowed 50,000 for knee medical work, and that hasn't happened yet. We haven't heard from him to see if it's just delayed, or if it's still needed. Local option is higher by 59,000, and that's the timing of the capital projects. Road use tax was very good for the year, so our ending balance is over by 433,000. That, the revenue coming in was higher than we had estimated by 262,000. Part of that is the increase in the gas tax, and then just the normal economy drives that as far as fuel purchases. Funding transfers were less than what we'd estimated by 171,000. A lot of that was in the general fund, and some of that was carried forward to next fiscal year. Then I'll skip down to housing, and both of those, public housing came in a little greater than what we'd estimated by about 33,000, and the voucher program was higher by 17,000. And that's, those are directly related to HUD funding. So overall, most funds are close to where we thought they'd be, and we have just two funds that are deficit, the refuse and the transfer station. The next three slides are kind of a summary of footnotes. I won't go through them, because that's what I was kind of using as part of the presentation. So I think we're down to the final summary at the end, and this is, again, the ending fund balance is 22.6% of expenditures. We had originally budgeted at 16.8%, revised estimate was 19.8, so that 22.6% is significantly higher than what we had budgeted. That balance meets the requirements of the city's general fund, fund balance policy, which is 16.7%. That ending balance also helps position the city to address future budget challenges. And one of those challenges that, known challenges, is the rollback of the multi-residential property values. That starts in FY 17, so the first year of it will be in the budget that we'll be working on in the next couple of months. And those values will be rolled back to the residential rates by FY 24. So it's going to be a long, we don't have a good handle on how much impact that will be at this point, but once we get the numbers from the assessor for this upcoming year's budget, we'll be able to project the future year's decline in taxable values. As I said before, there was positive balances in all funds, with the exception of refuse and transfer station. And I had to highlight it again, the landfill deficit is no longer a deficit, which is excellent. And then most funds have good, strong balances going into next year's budget process. Any questions I can answer on?
I have an unusual, first of all, thank you. You gave us answers we hoped for. That's always appreciated. If one suspects irregularities in state and local sales tax, what are the provisions for audits? How does one go about that? You may not know the answer.
So you're talking local option tax, or?
Well, both state sales tax and, and, yeah, local sales tax.
Paid by a, by a local entity?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure how we could ask the question of the state.
Would you please?
And I'm not sure, I think they have, they're audited as well. And it probably, if, if, if they're collecting it, and they're giving us our 1%, I would think that their audit would address any issue about that, if, if they were collecting things that we weren't getting. Anything that people aren't paying is a whole nother issue.
And that's, that's the question, it's not being paid, or perhaps.
The tax I have in mind, I don't know if that comes to us from, through the state, or whether it comes to us directly. I don't know the answer to that.
Local option will come through the state, but?
It all goes through the state. The local option is all paid to the state. Hotel motel tax is paid to the state, and then they remit it back to entities.
Got it, thank you.
We can ask the Iowa Finance Authority.
Thank you.
Nancy, like the CVB coming into the city, that was after, after this fiscal year, right?
That was done as of June 30th. So in the audited statements, we're showing it as being in operation in FY 15, but with an equity transfer out at June 30th, and the equity transfer in as an enterprise fund in FY, at the end of FY 15. And that will, that will make it easier to manage going forward.
Any other questions, council?
Did a good job.
Very good.
If anybody wants any, you know, department detail, it's all in the handout that we gave you last week. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, item six on tonight's agenda, we're pulling that, to be discussed at a later date, the proposed community development fees presentation, so we're not talking about that tonight. Item seven is comments from council members. Mike?
Couple of meetings ago, I don't recall exactly when, but we were given that information about where the county stacks up on different social and health and crime statistics. And I asked that we, that a report be generated showing historical crime statistics from Muscatine? Are they going up, are we going down? Where are we? And I wrote an email to you, Greg, but never got a response on that.
Yes, and it's been in the last couple of updates, it'll be in the update going out tonight as well. Police Department's preparing a presentation for City Council, and we just got the CLIA report today, I believe, yesterday, and so we're going to touch on the accreditation report at the same time for City Council, so they're working on that presentation right now.
When do you expect that to be scheduled?
November in depth.
Good, great, thank you.
Phil?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Cut.
I think we have the public safety open house Sunday, right, Chief?
Sunday, 12 to 3.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Great. Just a reminder to vote, vote.
Early and often.
Early and often, that's right, absolutely. Oh, and we had a meeting with Fulton and Mink today, and tentative, the next public meeting on Mississippi Drive Corridor is November 10th. We'll, of course, get that information out there, but just as an FYI.
Any ideas?
5:30. Riverfront, most likely, Riverview, excuse me, most likely. But we'll, of course, get more information, so just to kind of hold the date, Tuesday, November 10th.
Very good. Fran?
That's it, Your Honor, thank you.
And I have nothing, is there any other business, council? Promotion to adjourn?
So moved.
Meeting is adjourned.